Here through Community Ed and we do have a category for children and teens. And these are some of the opportunities that are offered to our students outside of school. So there is a fee for these activities, however, they're unique, they're different, and they're unlike activities or opportunities that we might offer in the school setting. So just to create that awareness for individuals in the public, there's a, as I mentioned, a page on our website under departments and community education that lists some of these different opportunities for our students. As we move into clubs and activities within our school settings, you'll see on these tables this evening, a lot of clubs or activities that are familiar and some that are even new. So I've listed here some of the clubs, I'll call out a couple, specific to the high school, for our high school students. And many of these clubs or activities are getting started this month via virtual means, virtual meetings, hoping to transition at some point to onsite engagement or participation, if you will. Some of them take place outside or even offsite. Red Cross is a new club this year that's trying to get up and running. They have lots to learn, but there's a group of individuals very excited to participate and advocate for the work of the Red Cross. Bowling Club is up and running and right now the advisors are interested in continuing those opportunities for our students again while upholding the guidelines, we know mitigate the spread of the virus. We'll continue with clubs like PV Inc. if we're able to return to onsite instruction. Medical Sciences is, is an activity or a club for our high school students interested in the sciences that can be conducted over Zoom. So when our advisors are able to do that, they are taking every opportunity to gather the students and get these clubs up and running. Speech and debate will take place primarily via virtual with the hopes that they can eventually end up with some onsite. We have a walking club at the high school that's led by some teachers and any students interested can join. I will mention that the musical is something that both middle schools and high schools are thinking about and actually wondering about. They're doing some research and figuring out which musicals might be most appropriate because they would include maybe some more social distancing and less of that aerosol distribution, something else that we concern ourselves with right now. So some of our directors are conducting some research and trying to figure out how they, which direction they might move in and then how they begin the process of developing a production team, communicating information about the show, conducting auditions and actually producing. So we have lots of very interested advisors that want to keep these things happening for our students and involving our students. I'll call out Unified Sports, that's new for us this year at the high school. And if you recall, we worked with representatives from the Special Olympics last year after applying really almost a year or so in advance to be accepted into Unified Sports. And Unified Sports really is just that, it's an opportunity to unify students, really uphold our mission, advance our mission as we aim to include all students and create or cultivate inclusive school communities. Unified Sports engages regular education students and special education students in PIA athletics. We're aiming for track and field in the spring. We have an advisor who's ready to get this activity up and running and she'll start to recruit some of the students that will serve as leaders in our school and work with some of our students that would really benefit from that partnership or that arrangement. So we're excited about Unified Sports. Ultimate Frisbee is shifting from the fall to the spring, very popular with our students. We also have virtual chess for our kids at the high school and intentions to do something with a fall play, more to come on that because that's tricky with some of the guidelines that we must uphold, but we have individuals really interested in trying to figure out what might be possible for our students. As we move to the middle school, again, some of these, if you have middle school students, most likely look familiar to you. First Lego League wants to get up and running again, Robotics at the high school is also up and running. Some onsite, there's been some virtual. So lots of virtual plans to get things started for our students. Art Club, Speech and Debate at that level. We have a Stressless Club for our students. Newspaper. We have a mentoring club that I'll call out. That's in early stages of development and that's really as a result of some work that's been led by Dr. Kloon and administration here at District Office in conjunction with Ursinus. Ursinus is recruiting some of its students that are interested in mentoring younger students and we are attempting to partner our students so that for some of our students, again, that would really benefit from that relationship and that mentoring that we engage them in that way. We will also have some of our extracurricular music ensembles continuing to meet at different levels. And again, at the middle level, our schools are considering what might be possible with respect to a spring musical. That's a big event for our middle schools and gets lots of students to participate each year. So looking forward to what they might end up designing. As we move to some of the other music ensembles, you may have seen this photo before, our high school marching band is actually conducting voluntary practices at this point. They're preparing for a non-competitive season, however, they have performance on their mind and they're aiming towards some performances and some opportunities to showcase their talents. And you'll see some of the other ensemble groups that are extracurricular beyond band, chorus, and orchestra that we intend to have up and running in some way, shape, or form. Lots of it may be virtual, some of it may be editing to create a performance, putting together some video clips. However, our, our advisors are really interested in continuing the work that they really love. As we move to athletics, this has been a conversation for us on and off over the summer. And you are aware as a board of some changes that have been occurring in the PAC as well as more extensively through the county. And this information, there's a lot of words on this slide, but it helps you to know what's happening in which school districts right now as of today. So you can see that of the PAC, the Pioneer Athletic Conference League, Narstown, Pottstown, and Pope John Paul have opted not to move forward with high school sports. Others will begin either yesterday or today. And you can see the list of schools right now that are offering high school fall sports. There are some schools that are selecting based on those levels of risk as identified by the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. So in some cases, some high schools are not offering some sports. Football, for example, is a high risk or classified as a high risk. And there are some schools that have opted to move away from football this year. The PAC is certainly continually, are continuing to develop its guidelines. And again, as it gets new information, it considers that information, it's developing schedules to try and bring the teams together where there is an interest and a comfort level in competing this year and engaging our students. We have announced previously that practices actually officially could begin yesterday. Ours began today. Contest won't begin prior to September 25th, except for golf, and you can see that listed there. There is a suggestion that we remain within our county and even within our league. So again, that cohort or bubble idea where we don't expose our students to too many different people, but instead stay within the area that we're used to and typically engaged with. There, there are those limits with spectators inside or out and inside limits, and there have been some updates to spectators, indoor limits are at 25 and that includes players, coaches, refs, et cetera. So we have to be very careful about the number of individuals that might be included or invited in to watch a volleyball match or a water polo match. At the middle level, it's a little bit, uh, there's some more hesitation, if you will. There are five PAC school districts who have opted not to play or participate in middle school sports at all this year, and you can see them listed. Four of the school districts are offering all middle school fall sports right now. Potts Grove has eliminated football at the middle level. There aren't any schedules drafted yet at this point, and our middle school students, our athletes typically start after the beginning of the school year, and that's certainly a consideration among the athletic directors and the high school principals that oversee the PAC league. So consideration for when those middle school students would be available because we know that it can be really difficult for middle school students to get back to school for a practice if they're in a virtual learning mode. It's difficult also to reschedule these practices to be later in the night when parents may be available to bring middle school students back to school for practice. Lots of them participate on club or travel teams, so they're obligated at night in other ways. That's also not a very appealing time for our coaches. And Mr. Galansky has expressed to me that while all of our high school coaches have returned, many of the middle school coaches have not. We've extended the registration for middle school athletes and our enrollments are still lower than what they typically are. And we also have, um, we're sort of tight on field space and gym space because of the work that's happening with our turf fields. So athletics has a little bit more to it than some of the other extracurricular activities. And I know that the coaches that, that I have spoken to are very much advocating for continuing with the season and participating in the PAC this fall. That may be something that you want to discuss a little bit more about as a board. There are lots of opportunities for our students though to consider, from Community Ed to some of those clubs and activities, our music programs as well as the athletics. So, so lots for them to do and supplement in addition to the academics that they're focused on. And we're hoping that we get some strong engagement so that again, our students get back to something closer to the normal that they know. And that would be it.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Russell. That brings us now onto section 1.05, comments on any topic. Comments are accepted from the audience on any topic. We did have a comment submitted in writing prior to the meeting that is attached at the bottom of this agenda item for anyone who wants, yeah, if you want to pop that open, that is available to the public for anyone who wants to view those comments. And Mr. Ganesh, are you on the line now? Are you able to? Okay, you were able to facilitate?
Yes.
If our attendees have their hands raised, okay. So I'm going to open it up to the public for the public comment period and you have two, three minutes to offer a comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and where in the district you live, or if you don't live in the district but you're an employee, please let us know what building you work in. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Ganesh to facilitate this portion. So I actually, I'm, Mr. Ganesh, I'm not seeing any hands raised, are you?
No, I have not. So I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any raised hands. Okay, there will be other opportunities for comment later in the agenda in each section of the agenda. So we'll go ahead and move on to section two on reports and we'll start with 2.01, the Students Liaison Report, and I'll turn it over to Ms. McGovern and Mr. Maggie Smith. I'm sorry. I totally twisted that up. Ms. Maggie McGovern and Mr. Matt Smith, my apologies.
Mrs. Lofton, I, I do not see Ms. McGovern or Mr. Smith in the Zoom room.
I thought I had seen that earlier. Okay. Okay, well. If they are, yeah, I'm not seeing them either now. Okay. Well, if they come back, if they are able to join us later, then we can allow them to do their report later in the agenda. But let's just go and move on to section 2.02, the President's Report. I just want to, I'll keep it short and sweet. Today's the first day of school. I have heard an abundance of positive feedback that people were very pleasantly surprised at how well the virtual classrooms went. Not to say that there weren't some hiccups that needed to be addressed, but everybody addressed all the challenges with good grace and working together collaboratively and just, you know, I really heard from a lot of people that, you know, as much as they want to be in the building and with their friends, um, that they felt that the first day went really well. So I just wanted to say a huge thank you to everybody who put in countless hours and tremendous amount of effort to make the first day a success. We know that it was really just a gargantuan task to have everything up and running for the first day of school, so thank you all. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Russell for the Superintendent's Report, section 2.03.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lofton. And again, I have just a few points of interest and want to bring our attention to our tagline, what will you learn today? Again, trying to get people to focus on that, and we're certainly learning a lot in these new and different ways that we offer the service of school. And again, our mission to cultivate an inclusive community of learners. Again, this is a strong focus in the upcoming year where our students are empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. So a couple of points of interest that I'll share with you. We had our opening day with staff last week. I'll just give you a brief review of some of the things that we discussed and how our staff were engaged on those four days before students arrived today. We can talk a little bit about the first day of school. I really appreciate the feedback from Mrs. Lofton. I'll give you an update on South and where we are with the kitchen there, the athletic field improvements, and then I too will echo some of the thanks that Mrs. Lofton has expressed. And, and this young gentleman here in the lower right corner is an individual who actually gave a pep talk as part of a video that the Reading Area School District produced. And much of what he said resonated with lots of us in the school systems today, and he really did a great job. So if you have a few minutes, it's available on YouTube and it's really worth the four minutes of watching. He, he was really impressive. And again, I appreciated the words that he shared and the way that he did that. So my message to our staff this year really focused on the positives to consider the opportunities versus our obligations, to set aside routines and really reimagine school and to find advantage where it feels like a lot of adversity. And Mrs. Lester had zeroed in on times like these because these are certainly some sort of times many of us will remember, and they've been different as we've prepared for the school year and now embarked upon it. And there's a really nice opening day video that Mrs. Lester produced that will be published on our website. So thinking about these times and attempting to find more of the positive in them versus anything other than that. So we talked a little bit about that and then we talked about how we're actually going to offer the service of school. It was one thing to end the year in a virtual environment after having been working with our students onsite, having built relationships, made those connections, understanding them really well as learners, to now this fall, having to reintroduce our students to school, re-acclimate our students to school, welcome new students to school in a virtual environment. So that's really different. So our professional development team, our curriculum and instruction team with their look-alike emojis, did a lot of work to help our teachers be prepared for embarking upon this school year in this way. And that's really what our teachers did last week over the course of those four days. They spent a lot of time in some practical professional learning sessions as well as opportunities to collaborate with their colleagues and really plan out some meaningful virtual lessons. Again, striking that balance between how much screen time we expose our students to with, um, the work that they can do on their own away from the screen. So it's that balance between synchronous screen time and then asynchronous work where they feel supported, confident, and ready to tackle some things on their own. So our teachers are working very diligently to get that balance right and to move our students forward this year. And we were really excited to get the year started today. On opening day, it was also really critical that we went over our health and safety plan. So we spent some time talking about the different components and some of the guidelines that we are now obligated to uphold. And in addition, just going back to the task force that worked with us on developing this health and safety plan, one of the questions really that emerged from one of our later meetings was, how do we make sure people are thinking about their own health, that they're self-monitoring and making sure that they're not persevering or pushing through an illness and coming to school into our school community where there is the potential for spread? And we talked about a sort of accountability system or an auditing system of sorts. And what we came up with is this QR code. So all of our employees are encouraged every day to conduct that symptom monitoring, to self-reflect on their own health and make sure they're feeling okay to come to school. They scan this QR code as they walk in the door and they answer one question that indicates they have conducted their, their symptom monitoring for the day. We're not interested in any of their personal medical information, however, we do want to continue to prompt our employees to conduct that self-monitoring, that symptom monitoring on a daily basis. So we kicked this off today and we had a couple of questions, but for the most part, it took our employees to where they needed to go. They signed their name and they were done. Today was the first day of school onsite for some of our students in different ways. So I happened to be at Skipback. We sort of divide up when we welcome students for the first day of school. And I was at Skipback this morning where we did welcome a small group of students and we had a wonderful group of teachers anxiously awaiting. The bus pulled up and then we had a really nice group of students who for the most part were excited to be back at school. We had a, we had to work with one of them, but it was great to see kids again on our school, in our school setting. And then we also had kindergarten orientation, sort of a grab and go for our kindergarten students with a parent to come in and get their device. They had to log on to their device in school. So they had to come into the building in small groups of about six kindergarten students, grab their device, and then they headed out. So they didn't, they just moved right into the gym and then right out once they had their device. So it was pretty quick, but it offered them an opportunity to have that touchscreen device to be ready for when they engage with their teachers. So we had some excited kindergarten students this morning too, in all four of our buildings. Shifting from the first day of school to some of the other activities that are happening around the district updates, the kitchen is moving along at South Elementary as part of our ESCO Project 3B. And the freezers are in, the refrigerators are in. This was big. This was big news. They looked great. So that's really moving along and we'll continue to share pictures with you as the aesthetics of the kitchen starts to take shape, but very excited to have this and also appreciative of a little extra time. It's actually come in handy right now. And then we have our turf fields. The stadium is looking great. This was a picture taken by somebody connected with field turf and really looks impressive. And some of the excitement that's come with these fields has kind of been set aside with everything else that's going on, but they have done a really wonderful job. It's, it's, it's very sharp looking and we're excited to be able to have students on there, community members on there soon to participate in athletics. And they're working on the baseball field and converting that to a turf field that will again, not only serve baseball and potentially softball, but also field hockey, soccer, and even lacrosse. So they're making, they're making lots of forward movement on this and within a month, this one should also be completed. So for now, we've got some of our fields tied up, but the stadium's looking great and, and baseball will be next. And, and again, as I mentioned in the beginning, I just want to echo what Mrs. Lofton said. I want to extend thanks really to the teams of individuals that have worked through the summer. Our administrative team does a lot of behind the scenes work. Our principals worked tirelessly, especially with these really unique schedules and really trying to work with parents to serve their needs and accommodate what it was they were requesting. So shout out to our principals, a shout out to our curriculum and instruction team. They did a lot of work as well to help our teachers feel ready. Shout out to our technology team. It's a small team, but it's a mighty one and has helped all of our students who needed a device to start this year, have a device to start this year, and I'm very appreciative of that, as well as help us shift to that new student information system, which, which is no easy feat. So on top of everything else that's happening, our staff and our administrators are also shifting to this new student information system, which takes some time to get to know. It'll be wonderful when we know the ins and outs of it, but that too has brought a couple of little challenges that have inserted themselves along the way. So thanks to our technology team, maintenance and custodial teams, if you go into our buildings at this point, and we have lots of staff in our buildings, you saw we have some students in a couple of our elementary schools now. Our buildings look great. So again, I appreciate the work of our maintenance and custodial staffs and the support staff that support our administrators. So really very fortunate to have the cohesive workforce that we do and get the work done that we've accomplished so far and glad to hear there's been some real positive feedback. We're looking forward to continually getting better at this virtual instructional learning model and making the experience as positive as we can for our students. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Russell. That brings us on to the Solicitors Report, 2.04. Mr. Subers, do you have a report for us this evening?
I was requested to provide some information to the board regarding the liability risk relating to proceeding with fall sports. And because that's a topic that involves information strategy relating to issues on which identifiable claims could be filed, I will be presenting that information to the board in the executive session. And I have no further report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Subers. That brings us on to Board and District Committee Reports. The committee reports from meetings this past month are, or since the last meeting, are here at the bottom. Does anyone have anything that they want to add to what's listed here? Okay, if no one has anything that they want to add, I do want to just mention for our community that the task forces are winding down and issues related to the reopening, excuse me, will be discussed in the Safety and Operations Committee moving forwards. We also began this past month with attempting the hybrid meeting format for the Safety and Operations Committee. We're going to continue working with a hybrid format for committee meetings in September and we'll see how that goes for the meetings. And then that brings us on to section three on the comments and consent agenda. Section 3.01, comments on any agenda items. Comments are accepted from the audience on any agenda items on the same requirements that were mentioned earlier. You may have up to three minutes and state your name and where in the district you live. And if you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. Are you, Mr. Ganesh?
No, I don't, I do not.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll move on to section 3.02, which is the consent agenda for the business meeting. Items that represent stated routine business of the board are included in the consent agenda. Consent items will be added to the agenda during the work session meeting. So board members, as you read your section, if there are no comments, just please indicate that we can. So board members, as we read your section, if there are no comments, just please indicate that we can move the item on to consent. And with that, we'll move on to section four and I will turn it over to Dr. Kohler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 4.01, comments from the audience are accepted on education. I don't believe I see anybody's hand raised. So we will move on to section 4.02. We have an education update from Mrs. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening's presentation in our education updates, we have a couple of topics for you on the agenda. We'll talk briefly about the opening of our school year, although you've heard several comments about that so far. A very brief overview of the instructional models then, as they were shared in our most recent community forum as well. And then it's that time of year to give you an update on our comprehensive plan and our progress moving through that plan. As well as to share with you yearly, we share the assessment schedule and what assessments we're planning in which grades. And then finally, Mr. Ganesh will share a few technology updates. So starting with the opening of school, you already heard a little bit about some of the professional development. There were three areas of focus last week, one of them being online lesson design, social emotional learning and wellness, and then obviously modern resources and all the technology tools available to us. So staff participated in workshops each day, focused on these areas and then had time to debrief and collaborate with their colleagues on their learning throughout that particular week. The next slide shows you a website that we created, it is linked there. If any of our board members would like to access it in the slides in board docs, we created a whole website that had all of the workshop slides are there, the schedule. It was a pretty robust four days, I would say, and lots of learning for our teachers. I'm sure they were overwhelmed, but they did a great job in all of the workshops and applying that learning. We also had obviously the Zoom training. We continue to learn things about Zooms and different features, but we had two different levels of training available for our staff. As well as on our last day, last Thursday, we had choice workshops. So kind of a mini Viking voyage like we did last November. We had two opportunities in the morning where they could pick from various different workshops and you can see a few of them on the screen that were available to them. The next slide, we'll get into our instructional models. And again, these were presented at the community forum last week. So I'm going to go rather briefly or quickly through them. But obviously, starting today, we had our students in virtual learning. They were either signed up for PV virtual or signed up to be in our Virtual Voyage 2.0. So in Virtual Voyage 2.0, remember the majority of this learning is the synchronous learning with our own PVSD teachers. Obviously continuing to have some offline work such as homework or times where we're not on the computer during our day, but following a set schedule. In our secondary schools, the schedule looks very similar to what they were used to in a traditional school in last year's schedule. They follow their exact same schedule, cycle days continue. There are built-in breaks or transition times for the teachers in which they know that they will allow their students, you know, the class isn't 52 minutes of sitting and watching your teacher teach. It's very much chunked and broken up by the teachers. And then some time at the end of class for some individual questions or to have that break and prepare for your next class. So this is middle school, the next slide's high school here, again, very similar to what their traditional schedule looks like. The elementary schedules were really based upon that family commitment survey and what parents' intent was when we, and if we returned to school. So there are two sets of schedules here, we're basically running a school within a school here with a virtual schedule for families who intend to stay virtual and then this blended model. So the next slide has, I believe, our those students that are intending to remain virtual when we reopen our schools, they are all assigned to within the elementary schools, a PVSD teacher. Most of our classes, we were able to maintain within their school community. Some of them do have to join across the district just because of the enrollment size and the staffing for this, to ensure that we have common class sizes in all of our programs. Students in this model at the elementary school are getting a full day synchronous learning with their teacher. Again, chunked as age appropriate for them, cycle days continue. And there's some small group and whole group instruction built into their day for each of their areas. And then moving into the blended model for those families who would like to return to school even when we reopen, they, we wanted their schedule to not have a change, you know, four to six weeks into the school year. So we wanted to start their schedule looking very similar to what it would look like when we transitioned back to school. So again, they are assigned to our own PVSD teachers. Half of their day is asynchronous learning with their teacher and the other half is activities and assignments and projects that are assigned by their teacher, but they're working on them in an asynchronous format. You can see here a sample schedule for one particular grade level where the yellow represents that time right now where they're learning synchronously through a Zoom session. And then you can see the blue represents asynchronous learning where they are using, you know, somebody at home maybe is assisting them, a learning coach. And then the green indicates the special area class, which is again a synchronous time through their Zoom links. And then you can see the opposite on the next slide is really just, it's a flip, it's flipped. So where that synchronous time was in the morning, it's now in the afternoon for these students. Beginning September 29th, we will maintain the virtual option for those families wishing to stay fully virtual and have our blended options at the secondary, what we're referring to as a hybrid, and at the elementary's the half day. So I believe Virtual Voyage 2.0 really is the same schedules that we showed you from the start of the year. So they will have a very seamless transition. And then the blended model, then we have again the hybrid or the half day. So at the secondary, in looking at our middle school schedule, we have looked and determined to break our students into two groups, coming to school on two to three days out of the week. And you can see that Wednesday rotates back and forth between the Group A or Group B. And then at our high school, we've had to break into three groups because of the size of the high school and the number of students. So two out of six days of the cycle, they would be onsite receiving their learning in person. The other students would be receiving their learning through the Zoom link virtually. And I do want to pause for just a minute on this particular side because we've had lots of questions about this and what this looks like at the secondary level. All of our students, regardless of if they are in the hybrid or they are fully virtual students, participate in the same classes. So this has some great advantages to it in that it allows a lot of flexibility for a student and their family should they need to move back and forth between any of the models. And their pacing the same, the curriculum is the same. If and when we all come back to, to school and it's a traditional model, we're all, you know, again, pacing exactly the same with our curriculum. We have also really invested in some technology for our staff with second monitors, with webcams, with document cameras to assist them in being able to see their kids virtually as well as be present with the kids that are in front of them. We know that's going to be difficult for them to manage and so we're trying to provide the tools to assist them in doing that. We did demo this with some of our secondary teachers and, you know, I can honestly say that it is much more interactive than I even initially thought that it would be. There was the ability to speak as a virtual learner, there was the ability to write in the chat. I could watch the videos, I could see my teacher as well as see what they were sharing on their screen as Dr. Russell is now. So again, it really is much more interactive than we had initially thought and I truly believe will benefit both our hybrid students and our virtual learners. The next slide has just what our elementary blended schedules look like. Again, it's the half day model and we're starting that from the beginning of the year. So again, there's not a change in what their schedule looks like. So it's really just the flip between the AM and the PM, that synchronous time. Middle of the day is lunch, exercise and transportation, and then the flip in the afternoon, the asynchronous. And the schedules on the next slides, again, they look, they look identical to what we showed you just a second ago, except the yellow is they're physically onsite during the yellow times. And then here's some enrollments, these are up to date as of today. So in PV virtual, remember this is our asynchronous where we're working with our intermediate unit. And they have seen a huge influx of students across the county into their virtual school. We have 91 students who are full-time, 91 full-time students participating from Perkiom Valley. And then here gives you a glimpse of what it looks like in our high school. These are the total enrollment, how many students in the grade level are full-time in PV virtual. Some students are part-time at the secondary, maybe they're just taking a course or two. And then how many students are remaining in that Virtual Voyage enrollment there. And then that would leave us with the remainder on the far right is how many students will be, if and when we return to school, would be returning in each grade level in that hybrid format. Middle school looks very similar, the charts look similar, your PV virtual, your Virtual Voyage students, and then what is left for our blended model. On this screen though, we're also able to show you based upon kind of splitting the kids in half, what we're projecting to be those half-day, sorry, not the half-day, the hybrid, the days that they are assigned to come, how many students may be in, in each particular class. And then elementary is a little bit more complicated because of the half-day piece. So this is by instructional model. So this screen just shows you the kids that are in the Virtual Voyage 2.0 and who intend to remain in that. In the upper left, you can see what our current enrollments are in each of the sections. You're, you know, able to see in some of the grades where we have maybe combined students across the district. We really worked very hard and, and I mean, the principals put in a ton of hours here to really have the class sizes in Virtual Voyage 2.0 be very similar to those in our half-day model and trying to keep them as close to our, you know, school guidelines as we, as we can. The bottom right then, one of the areas that we were concerned about is fourth grade. If you look across that in the top left, you'll notice 26s and 27s, which is above what we are comfortable with in, in a fourth grade classroom. And so I know that Dr. Russell has, you know, proposed to have an additional teacher that's on the agenda later on this evening to add to that fourth grade Virtual Voyage. And you can see in the yellow then on the bottom right, what those class sizes would look like, which are definitely much more acceptable to us in providing an education to our students. And I guess I should also note the asterisks, I'm sorry, Dr. Russell, if you didn't notice that. Some of the places you'll see an asterisk, that is where we intend to assign a full-time paraprofessional to assist the teacher in that particular classroom, just to provide some additional support there. And then the next slide, and I know this is, is a little hard to see, but it is linked at the top. Again, board members, if you're looking at the PDF in board docs, you can click on that and it will take you to a PDF of this that might be easier to read. But this is our K to two, the principals have shown here depicted for you by building the number of students in the AM and in the PM. These are actual, these are not projected, these are actually what is scheduled right now in each of the grade levels in each building. And we're, I think we're really pleased with how this worked out and how many students, you know, would be in if we are onsite in that half-day model. So this is K to two and the next screen is the three to five. I think that really, oh, the last piece of our reopening is really the phased reopening. These are still our plans, this is what Dr. Russell presented at our last board meeting in August. But still what we are focusing on is that first group of kids on September 29th being our K1 and 2, our sixth and our ninth grade students, followed in October by grades three to five, eight and 12. And then ideally by November 9th to be having all of our students back onsite in the models that we've discussed. All right, so our comprehensive plan, as you know, a couple of years ago, we worked really hard on this, many of you were involved in that. This is just an update for you on where we're at, we're kind of at our midpoint of our six-year plan. Our first goal area was future readiness. And in the top right of each slide, you'll see what the actual goal in that particular area is. And then the bullets really just highlight for you things that we, we have accomplished since this plan was approved. And a large portion of the work that we intended to do over these six years has either been accomplished or is well underway. So I'm, I'm really proud to report that to you. We've got MTSS going on at our secondary schools. We've been administering MAP now for a couple of years and really getting better at looking at that data. We have increased our instructional resources, completed our ACT 339 plan and our revision of our grad projects. We have new data analysis software in Linkit. Mr. Ganesh will report later on a lot of the things with our digital transformation has really moved along and certainly our current environment has pushed things even, even at a faster pace. We've done a lot of professional development and obviously our curriculum review continues. In the area of, I believe, safe and supportive schools is next. We have PBIS in all of our K to eight schools. As you know, we've worked really hard over the past two years to really increase our health and wellness at our elementary level and will continue that into our secondary schools. We've had a large focus on equity and inclusion. And are really, we were intending a very robust focus on culturally responsive teaching this year. We've adjusted that a little bit, but planned for that to still be a focus area. Again, continued PD, we have our inclusion facilitator, a full-time person in the second year now of that. And we have obviously increased our safety and security protocols with the implementation of Run Hide Fight in the past years. And then the last area is partnerships. Certainly, we try to partner with our community and Mr. Weaver and Mrs. Hurd do a great job in our budget development. There's been outreach to our 55 and over communities. Dr. Russell has certainly led her forums and roundtables. And we've had lots of focus group discussions, most recently on online learning where we've tried to include lots of our community members. And we've just been very cognizant of that on any district committee, ensuring that we have different stakeholders. And I just put the elementary special areas committee as one that we know got quite a significant turnout initially anyway, as we started through that. So lots of progress on the comprehensive plan. The assessment schedule, every year, it is part of our practice to share with the school board what our assessment schedule looks like. Some of you may be familiar with the chart on the next slide, which is really a depiction of across the top, all of the different assessments that we give across the K to 12 setting. And then throughout the rows, it indicates with the X indicates that that is an assessment given in that particular grade. Really, there have been no major changes to this from last year, except for the potential inclusion of benchmarks, which are through the data warehouse that we use through Linkit. They are very similar to something we've given in the past called the foresight, very much aligned to the state standards for a particular grade level. So that in combination with our map assessments, which are diagnostic, give a really nice picture of the performance of, of a student. So something that we may be using this year. But I do want to point out, because of the uniqueness of this year, we really are still continuing to work with our principals and teachers to identify what's the most meaningful and that can be done with fidelity in this virtual environment that we are in. So we don't have anything planned right now for these first few weeks where in past years, we'd be giving a map assessment or something else. We're kind of letting everybody adjust to, to schooling in a virtual environment. And then I believe the last piece, I will turn it over to Mr. Ganesh for technology.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Good evening, everyone. A quick update on devices and other things. So we have not received the order of the new Chromebooks yet. Or recall, there was already a delay. Orders expedited and we are in constant touch with the manufacturer to get the device. Though the Chromebook order is delayed, the good news is we are able to twice for all students K12 who have requested device. Almost at the one-to-one ratio of K12 and and
Mr. Ganesh?
Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Ganesh, but you really, your audio is intermittent. And I don't know if you would mute your video, if that would help at all, or if it's, if it's just the internet, but we're really not hearing a lot of what you're saying.
Sorry about that, I'll be having internet connections today, is this any better?
A little better right now, yes.
All right, so let me try to, yeah, sorry about that, blame it on Comcast. All right, so let me go back to, let me go back, let me start from the beginning, it's a very quick update. Again, some updates on the devices and the resources. One of the things I want to say is the devices that we ordered, the 1200 Chromebooks, we have not received them yet. And as for the vendor, estimated delivery is around last week of our orders expedited, we are in constant touch with the manufacturer and we're trying to get the device as soon as we can get them. But the good news is, even though the devices have not been delivered yet, we're able to repurpose our existing devices. When they have provided a device, every student K12 was requested a device. We're almost at one-to-one ratio here at 12. And there are still a few more requests that are coupling in that we are, that we still have some devices to provide them. So as far as the devices are concerned, we are in a decent shape to, to kind of sustain, sustain where we are until we get the new device. That's, that's about the student devices, as far as staff devices. We have about 4 and 20 teachers, 4 and 20 plus teachers who received their new laptops recently. We also provided Chromebooks to all elementary paraprofessionals. Secondary paraprofessionals already had received their devices last year. Point, all, all our staff, including paraprofessionals, have a device to function in the virtual environment, including the support staff for whom have a device to function in the virtual environment, including their support staff for whom we are dealing. So in addition to the laptops, to better facilitate the virtual voyage, we also provided monitors, monitors to be used. Again, uh, again, screen, one, we have distributed about 315 monitors to our teachers. Thanks to Dr. Parr and Mrs. Leah who was, was coordinated this. They've gotten these devices already. As far as the document cameras and webcams are concerned, we have not received them yet, but we have ordered over 250 of, 250 each of them. And they will be distributed as soon as we have. The last item I have is the E-RAID projects. You may recall the board approved the E-RAID projects back in March. Thanks to that, we were able to upgrade our firewall and also order additional wireless access points to be informed. So these are, these are actually listed as agenda items in that. Sorry about my audio issues. That's, that's, that's all the updates I have and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That was much better. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ganesh or I on the education updates?
Mrs. Smith, this is Rena. I have a couple of questions for you. So I know that the elementary students who have opted for hybrid, they've already been split up into AM and PM. I'm wondering when the secondary families would be notified, which groups they would fall into? That's my first question. And then my second question, um, is, you know, about the timeline for bringing students back in. Do we have an update on the county metrics and how we're doing in terms of sticking to that timeline?
So I will be happy to answer the first question, but I'm going to defer to Dr. Russell for the county metrics if she has any updated information. As far as the secondary groups, we are still intending a split based upon the last name. So I think the last time we talked about it, it was maybe an A through K and an L through Z for group A and group B. We would certainly work with the families if they have different last names and want to be on the same schedule to ensure that. So we can certainly put out some communication to assist families at the secondary level in understanding that. And if they are requesting some sort of change based upon a last name, to let us know that. Our principals have been running numbers to kind of see what those splits would look like in, in each of the classes, since classes are set at this, at this point. But we are still thinking the split based upon last name. So I'll make a note, Dr. Kohler, that we can do some communication regarding that. Dr. Russell, do you have any updated information on county metrics? Or certainly something we could share next week possibly?
Yeah, I mean, they're still, they're still pretty close to where they were when we talked about developing that phase in plan. I'd be happy to update the board more specifically next week if they'd like to hear that. And I can also share it in my communication this week. But right now, because they haven't changed dramatically, we are still aiming for that September 29th to phase in some of our students.
Anything else for myself or Mr. Ganesh? Well, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Ganesh. So we will move on to item 4.03. The motion is to approve an agreement with the Life After Trauma Organization to provide trauma-related services to teachers, parents and students for the 2020, 2021 school year at a cost not to exceed 20,000. Any comments or questions? If there's no other comments, questions, I had a couple of questions about this item. I was able to be involved with the presentation with the organization, Dr. Russell and I met with, I mean, and I was wondering, Dr. Russell, if you could talk about how you came up with the 20,000 figure and how much that will include. I know that there are some other low cost or even no cost options that are available right now. I had shared one of those with you. So I just wondered how we landed on the 20,000?
We landed on the 20,000. We've set aside some grant monies and we were a bit uncertain about how long some of the activities that Lado has presented will actually take. And they want to work with three different stakeholder groups in our community. They want to start with teachers and then transition to parents and students. And part of what that means for them is to assess or get to know where there are issues of trauma for individuals in each of those stakeholder groups. And they actually want to conduct some interviews, gather data and then analyze those data before preparing some responses or some treatments, if you will. Many of them are educational in nature. So, um, each of the sessions, whether they meet with a focus group and have conversations with teachers to learn about the trauma they've experienced or are feeling right now, or the responses that they prepare and then produce or share out has a fee to it and those fees have been provided. And because there was a little bit of uncertainty about how many hours might accumulate, we rounded up for now. I don't know that we'll exceed or get close to $20,000. We were, we just wanted to be sure that we could cover it because the organization did a nice job presenting. And the ways in which they're planning to target certainly seem as if they'll be helpful to our community.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to add, Dr. Kohler, is that I did share the resource that you in turn provided. I checked that out a little bit. We did share that with our staff. So I'm hoping that people take advantage of that. It was, it was also very nicely done.
Great. Thank you. There are no other comments or questions. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Should we move this item to consent? So item 4.04, if we could move the screen. Item 4.04, there is a request for action tonight to approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow a non-resident senior who has met the requirements of policy 202 to conclude the 2020, 2021 school year at Perkieman Valley High School, and I so move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item 4.05 is the enrollment report, which we presented next week, September 14th. So that concludes my section.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Keller. We'll move on to section five on business and I'll turn it over to Mr. Dorr.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Section 5.01, comments on business. I do not see any hands up. Okay, moving on, 5.02, a finance update for Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Dorr, and thank you, school board, for an opportunity to provide you with a, an update in the world of business here in Perkieman Valley School District. Our agenda is straightforward. We're going to have a real quick summary of where we are at with our expenditures specific to COVID. The revenues that offset that via grants. Some real preliminary unaudited general fund results for the 1920 school year. And I think the school board will be pleased with those. And a preliminary unaudited food services fund results for 1920 as well. And we all know what those numbers will look like moving forward. So Dr. Russell, if you'll move forward. So real quick, and again, this is in a high-level 30,000-foot view summary. We have expended somewhere in the neighborhood of almost $800,000 associated with PPE COVID situation. And this includes anything from cleaning and PPE supplies specifically that we're tracking for the, for most of our, our grants. About 254,000, either in spent monies or encumbered monies via purchase orders, mostly through the MCIU bid and the county wide bid and some other individual access of areas for us to get commodities that we need to help fight COVID and keep our buildings safe and clean. And then of course, the much talked about various technology implementations that Mr. Ganesh was just talking about. A quick summary there as far as laptops, Chromebooks, document cameras, Zoom licenses, et cetera, which are about $526,000 of that total. So total spent and encumbered as of tonight's meeting, about $780,000. We do expect some more dollars to be spent. We do have offsetting grant money and opportunities to help take into consideration those dollars outside of our normal budgetary means. And we will continue to have ongoing costs as we know. So Dr. Russell, if you move forward again, I'm sorry that this is so small, but basically what the board has seen this before, the actual grant summaries right now that we are applying for, have applied for or are working on to understand what those various components are of each grant, about $1.1 million. So we do anticipate that that $780,000 on the previous screen will grow to at least 1.167 million. And we do know that we still need to continue to provide various opportunities. These grants are covered in, in various formats, various ways. The COVID, uh, actual, the COVID 19 school health and safety grant through the PCCD portal has already been applied for. We've talked about that in the past. We continue to work on the Esser funds, 227,263. FEMA grant for COVID, FEMA PEMA grant, we're well in excess of $131,000. Mrs. Hurd and I have been tracking those dollars, been talking to the PEMA people specifically, working with those to get ready to apply for our first portion of those grants. The governor's emergency education relief, the GERM monies, an additional amount of dollars specifically through the county, from the state through the county, we're, we're running through that. And then the special education COVID is a relatively new grant that we found out about a couple of weeks ago. These grants are popping up through various sources and we continue to look at those as possibilities to help offset these rising costs in a variety of scenarios and positions. And then I would also like to point out the two PV Education Foundation grants, that total $50,000 that have come in real handy to help offset some additional costs from a technology perspective and some supplies for our students. Here are attached some various grant provisions that we need to work through. We are getting better at understanding that each grant that comes from these various sources has their own little niche and we need to work with them. So we're breaking down each and every one. What you see here is the Essers grant and how, what specific guidelines and details that we are working with as we try to, A, spend these monies, stay within procurement standards, make sure that we meet all the requirements that we have from a legal perspective, yet also meet the, the interpretation of and purpose of the grants to maximize their impact for these ongoing COVID costs. The Essers is there, Dr. Russell, there, there you go, the PCCD grant, taken directly from the language. There are some little snippets associated with this, the new stuff, like the special education COVID in 19 impact mitigation, mitigation grant. Boy, there's a lot going on there. And so we continue to break those down. And again, they're all little different in various ways. So it takes time for us to go through these requirements, make sure what we're going to ask for is properly seeded and siloed in, within these grants, and then move forward with them. So we have many different variables and parts moving forward. Any questions on the COVID expenditures at this point in time or the COVID grants?
Mr. Weaver, just on the, um, one slide down in the bottom, you had that, that your, their supply chain, you're continuing to look at the supply chain. And I think it said something about gloves and disposable gowns. Could you kind of let us know like how much we have, how lo, how long our supply will last? If, you know, we're having trouble getting a supply chain? And then also I was wondering if there's an update on the Plexiglas dividers that we were still looking for?
Yes. So a couple of things on that. Yes, we're forwarding and watching our inventory, working with our colleagues. The gowns and some of the gloves are really hard for us to find right now. The county order went in, in, in June. And we've been working with a gentleman down there specific for this. And all of our other stuff has come in, but the gloves and disposable gowns that we had been using for, planning on for the disposable gowns for the nurses specifically, they are really hard to come by. So we kind of cloistered ourselves over the past couple of days and we've successfully ordered a different procurement from a different supply chain for the disposable gowns. Those should be coming in tomorrow, so there shouldn't be that much of it that we, once they come in, we should be fine. The gloves are an industry-wide issue and we continue to work with the IU and the county because those purchase orders are still out there. And we continue to look at other options. Unfortunately, those options for gloves aren't too available right now. We do have a supply of those gloves that we've just ordered as part of our normal process for the start of the school year. Those were ordered beginning in April, so they are here. Food service gloves are fine. We do have some other gloves that are fine as well, but the Nitro gloves are really hard to come by. So we'll definitely keep everybody posted on that. And if anybody has any leads for gloves, please let us know. The other, I'm sorry, Mrs. Evans-Brock, at the other part of that?
Update on the Plexiglas dividers.
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah, we, well, we have good news on the, on the Plexiglas orders. We were lucky enough that we actually got together and went out and with the help of Patty Lowe and our purchasing department, Mrs. Hurd, Mr. Clemmer and myself, we actually figured out another purveyor of those Plexiglas items. And I'm happy to say that 175 of them did come in. And we are distributing those throughout the district. In addition to the fact that the face shields also came in as well. So we still have 250 ordered through the county. Those still, we're waiting for those to come in, but we do have significant amount of those that are in inventory at this point in time and being distributed. So we've met the, the initial hurdle specific to the needs for the special education department and exceeded that. But now I am sure as we continue to go along, there will be other instances where principals will want additional supplies. So we'll continue to, to tap into those as well.
Great. Thank you for that update.
Okay. All right. So moving forward, here we go. So preliminary unaudited figures of our general fund operations from last year. Many of you know that I'm very cautious with this. I will say unaudited, these will, these were, will change over time. But very quick snapshot here. You can see where the revenues come in at 112,49,000. That's our unaudited figures at this point in time. As we look at the, the numbers that are being audited by our local auditors, Mrs. Hurd is confident in those numbers, as, as am I. And you can see that the estimated expenditures are at 107 million. So, and this is not something that we had not reported before. We did know that we would have significant savings on the expenditure side of things, essentially because we stopped operations in March. Now, ACT 13 mandated that we paid people. So salaries and benefits are less of an impact. But a lot of these things on the lesser expenditures at this point in time have been driven by the fact that we just simply stopped operating in March. Significant savings in transportation, which were, were well-publicized in some other areas that were locked down at that point in time, specific overtime as well. So we have some savings there when we compare it to the S, the budgeted number for expenditures. And what that does is that drives an estimated unassigned fund balance of about 14 million, 14.4 million. When you take into consideration all those factors, right now we're saying we gained in our fund balance about 4.8 million overall. Now, part of the conversation we had was what we were going to do for the COVID reserve. And that was not, that number was derived by whatever the operations figure would be. And then that was one variable. The other variable was what 8% of our budgeted expenditures for 2020, 2021 is. And you can see there that 8% of that figure is 9,130,000. So when you look at the difference between the 14,4 and the 9 million, you can quickly see that we have about $5.3 million, almost 5.4 million. Again, it's unaudited that we, that we need to move to reserve to help off, to get us, A, within our 8% criteria by law, which we know about. And two, to help set us, set us up with a COVID reserve dollar figure in a fund balance post 1920.
So, Mr. Weaver, if I can ask a question about that?
Please.
So we had talked in the spring that we were setting aside, I think it was in the neighborhood of what, two or three million dollars into a COVID reserve fund. So those monies are included in this money that you're showing us here. We have not actually taken that out. taken that out and moved it into the COVID reserve fund as we had indicated that we would.
That's correct. And I just remind you that the board has autonomy and authority to say, Jim, we need to think about where we're going to put those money so we could backfill into the Peasers' reserve. We can put them into capital reserve projects. We could put them into the debt service reserve. There are a whole bunch of things with that number that we can do as a group, as an administration team, and a board work together to put those numbers away. The only other item that I would mention is remember, we did utilize some of these monies to help offset the 2020, 2021 general fund budget. And we'll get into that a little bit later in the finance committee. So it's not like we have 5.4 million dollars. We actually utilized 1.5 million dollars of that in unreserved fund balance. And we did utilize some of that future COVID reserve, about 300,000, I think, to help offset and make a balanced budget for 2021. So we'll get into that a little bit more in the finance committee. So it's a little bit less than that, but I felt it was appropriate that the school board knows where we're at from an unaudited perspective for last year's results.
So compared to the budget that we approved in the spring, we should subtract the COVID reserve fund as well as the monies that we took out of the unassigned fund balance from this number.
Absolutely.
So it's really a difference of somewhere, it's closer to like about a million or 1.5.
Yeah, so if you take the 5.3 and take out the 1.5 and the 300,000, it's about 1.8 less. So it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.5 million we should have for a COVID reserve if we take the entire difference and designate that. And again, we were somewhere between 2.7 and 3.2 as we worked our way through our budget process for a COVID reserve. So I'm pleased to bring that number forward. Again, it's all subject to audit review.
Sorry, and so then the 800,000 that you just mentioned is already coming out of that?
Would be coming out of that 5.3 million. That's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, and we've got, we've got a lot to talk about at the committee meeting, the finance committee meeting in regards to that. And we've got time to figure out what our best approach is as well. Okay, so moving forward to the food service fund. Oh, I'm sorry, here, here's another slide, I'm sorry, which helps to explain that a little bit better. So if you see the 5.3 million carried forward from the last slide, and then you can see that what we utilize for Peasers' reserve, debt service reserve, unreserved fund balance and COVID reserve, I'm sorry. Amy did remind me of this when we set this up. So we're, the total uses of fund balance about 2.3 million. So if you take that off, we're right about the 3 million dollar mark then for the COVID reserve. And here are some estimated fund balances that you can see split as they currently stand tonight. And again, they're all, they will all change as we move forward from an audit perspective. And we'll get into more of this detail at the committee meeting. Okay, so moving forward to the food service fund, kind of the opposite story in the food service. We do know that we, we kept a lot of grab and go lunches that did qualify for free and reduced reimbursement. And we do know that Act 13, fortunately, or unfortunately, depending on what side of the business aisle you're on, maintained that we had to provide salaries as if the school year continued. So the opposite is here for the food service because they didn't have a lot of revenues coming in. They were somewhat limited for, for just reimbursements of the free and reduced lunches, the grab and go lunches. And of course, participation was greatly reduced, obviously, from a full-service cafeteria model that we provided forever to the limited grab and goes. Now, it was offered as needed, but those numbers are generating a loss of about 238,000 straight operation revenue to expense. And again, there's not much we can do about that. We know that it's providing a service, a valuable service to the community. And we do know that we're trying the best that we can to try to mitigate these losses, but still maintain the functionality of a food service moving forward. That's very different from our previous. For those of you who have been on the board or been paying attention for a long time, we always break even or make a little bit of money. In this particular case, because of that lack of the other revenue streams, the à la carte sales, the other lunch sales, that kind of drove that down a little bit. Any questions?
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
About this food service, does that include monies that we have received from Harrisburg to reimburse for food services through the schools? Or is that part of the revenue? Is that the revenue that you're talking about?
We did apply for reimbursable lunches. And so, yes, those numbers are included in those revenue figures.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we'll have a little bit more on that in the, in the committee meeting.
Okay, so that, I was going to ask Mr. Weaver whether or not you were going to discuss the future of the food service that we want to provide, but it sounds like you have that on the committee meeting agenda.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, Mrs. Yaksic has certainly not stopped shaking any, any moss off the log at all. She continues to work hard to try to find some other revenue sources. So I do appreciate that. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. 5.03, we have no report for grants at this time. 5.04, the action is a motion to ratify the amendment number three to the Edit Point Software License Agreement for the total cost of 13,832 over a period of five years. Any questions? Okay, can we move out to consent, please? 5.05, it's a motion to ratify the purchase of wireless access points from Comstar at a cost of 89,180.76. Any questions? Okay, if we can move out to consent, please? 5.06, there'd be a motion to ratify the purchase of implementation of Palo Alto Firewall through E+ for 97,183. Any questions? Okay, we can move on, put that to consent? 5.07, the motion to ratify the purchase of the following technology, equipment, and resources for staff. 315 Dell monitors and associated cables, total cost 40,679.10 265 Logitech web cameras, total cost 64,925 290 document cameras, total cost 28,420. Any questions? So the only question I had, is this coming from the technology budget or is this being money moved over?
Jim, this was all budget, grant money that we used for these purchases?
Yes, that, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's move to consent, please. 5.08, the motion is to approve special education contracts and cost of services for the 2020, 2021 school year to meet requirements of students' IEPs through out-of-district placements and special services provided to students within our district programs. Any questions? Okay, can we please move that to consent? 5.09, motion to approve a settlement agreement and release number 300901 in lieu of FAP as recommended by solicitor. Any questions? Okay, please move that to consent? 5.10, motion to rescind prior award contract to Musco Sportslighting LLC for electrical work relating to Thomas J. Keane Stadium, 60,000 and 710,000, June 29, 2020, item 4.13, and varsity baseball field improvements, 4,300, July 6, 2020, item 5.14. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent, please? 5.11, it's a motion to ratify, approve, change orders, number one through, through five, the athletic field turf projects as presented. Any questions? I don't see anything in the box. Was there supposed to be?
Yeah, Mr. Dorr, my apologies, for some reason, this image is not appearing. So we're going to work on that. Maybe we can come back to that. I'm not sure, if you can look at that and then I can refresh if you let me know. Okay.
Yeah, I have it open on my other screen and it is coming up fine on.
Mine is too, yeah.
I'm not seeing it on my laptop.
Let me, let me refresh and see if it can get it to come up.
I see it on my laptop as well, my other laptop.
I'm not sure what's happening there. Maybe what we can do is actually attach a PDF so that in the event individuals are trying to see this, they can at least open the PDF.
Okay, I mean, any objection to that? So should we move it to consent, Mr. Subers? You're on mute.
Yes, this could be placed on the consent agenda if someone has a problem between now and next week, they can ask for it to be removed next week.
Thank you. Any objections, moving to consent? Okay. So 5.12, motion to approve Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to provide backup payroll services during the period of payroll position transition at a cost not to exceed 9,000. Any questions? Okay, we can move that to consent, please? And that ends my section.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Dorr. That brings us on to section six on the payment of bills, and I will turn it over to Dr. Weston.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 6.01, comments on payment of bills. Comments from the audience are accepted on payment of bills. I am not seeing any hands raised, so unless somebody is aware of a comment to be made, I will move on to item 6.02, the ratification of bills and payroll for the authorization of payments. This will be addressed at next week's meeting. Item 6.03, the approval of the treasurer's report and financial statements will also be addressed at next week's meeting. And that concludes section six.
Hey, thank you very much, Dr. Weston. Let's move on to section seven, professional personnel. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Evans-Brock.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 701, are there any comments from the audience on professional personnel? I see no hands raised, so we'll move on to 702. All of these are requesting action tonight. So the recommended action is to accept the resignations and retirements as listed in ISO move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 703, the recommended action is to ratify slash approve the leads of absence as listed in ISO move.
Second.
Wait.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
704, the recommended action is to ratify, approve the provisional employment of the professional personnel as listed, pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
705, the recommended action is to ratify, approve the provisional employment of the long-term substitute and extended daily substitute personnel as listed and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
706, the recommended action is to approve the department chairs for the 2020, 21 school year as listed and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
707, the recommended action is to ratify the appointment of mentors for the 2020, 21 school year as listed and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
708, the recommended action is to ratify the appointments of 2020 fall coaches as listed, including salary plus additional associated payroll and benefit and ISO move.
Second, wait.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
709, the recommended action is to approve the appointments of the 2020, 21 winter coaches as listed, including salary plus additional associated payroll and benefit costs and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
Just that the written comment that was submitted was in question of the high school head coach for girls' basketball. I assume this is someone that Mr. Glansky interviewed and approved.
Yes, to my knowledge, it was actually a small committee. I can't tell you who comprised the committee, but it was a process that Mr. Glansky led. And this is the candidate that was recommended emerging from the process.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question about that. So this is for the winter coaches, so I'm wondering why we need to take action on this one tonight, if this, if there were questions raised, if we want to look into that. Do you know why we're taking action on the winter sports coaches this evening?
I, you know, I, I let Mr. Alabac, I would defer to Mr. Alabac. Sometimes there can be voluntary practices in advance, and I know there's going to be transition in the coach for basketball anyway. And that may be a reason why. However, I don't know, Mr. Alabac, if you have additional explanation, I'm happy to look into it based on the comment that was presented this evening.
Yeah, I'm not certain that it needs to be approved tonight, but that is the reason. I don't know when practices are starting. It may be able to defer until next week if the board so chooses.
You know, I think I saw Mr. Glansky on as an attendee.
Yes.
I believe he did.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Glansky. Thank you for joining us this evening. So I think there was a question raised about I suppose the credentials of the girls' high school basketball coach. And I'm wondering if you could just speak to your process for vetting that individual?
Yeah, we posed a position and then a committee of seven administrators, teachers, coaches, reviewed resumes, identified those that we wanted to interview. We interviewed those, brought back finalists. After we heard the second round of interviews, that was the recommendation of the group. And the second piece, I guess you're talking about is why now? And somebody touched on it. Yeah, we do get, traditionally, we start open gyms early and before the season. So the idea was to have the person in place so we could do that. Yeah, we do get, traditionally, we start open gyms early and before the season, so the idea was to have the person in place so we could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Glansky. So are there any further questions about this motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven ten, the recommended action is to approve a memo of understanding with PVEA noting an amendment to the co-curricular salary schedule as recommended by the co-curricular committee, and I oh, this is not for tonight. Are there any questions on this? So we can move this to consent. Now we're back to an approval for tonight. The recommended action is to ratify the creation of one full-time teaching professional staff position due to increased student enrollment and virtual voyage two point oh in fourth grade, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I have just a couple of questions. Originally, there were four, in the slides that were shown to us at our last meeting, there were, was a teacher for each of the schools assigned in fourth grade to virtual voyage, and that's when the numbers were lower. So what initiated the decision to move one of those teachers out of virtual voyage?
I would offer that it was really just a balancing act as students enrolled in the half-day, and there's been quite a bit of shifting these past two weeks. Principals attempted to balance so that those half-day sessions had a number that could maintain social distance, and if we come back together as a full class was still reasonable in size. And we saw some of that shifting last week as well as after the forum that we held into Thursday and Friday. So the numbers were offset, essentially is what occurred.
Okay, and then along those lines of adding a teacher because we had more kids decide to do virtual. If we are able to return on the twenty-ninth and there are parents that had signed up for hybrid and have now decided they're not comfortable sending their kids back at the elementary level, will those kids remain in their half-day classes and those teachers will livestream, or would they be moved into a virtual classroom?
It's a good question. Right now, we have the students set up so that they would remain with those teachers in those half-day sessions, if you will. If they would opt not to come back, then they would most likely livestream. Or if we talk to the parents, it may be possible to move them into virtual. We're trying to avoid students changing teachers, and that would mean a change in teachers. However, we've also really tried to work with our families, and where parents are uncomfortable having their children come back on site or even start the school year thinking about being back on site, we've really tried to work with them. So I think we would probably look at situations individually. However, those virtual voyage two dot O classes have really filled up pretty well. So we'd have to look at the numbers at that point and evaluate.
I get that was my, my questioning was if we were going to allow families to do that, is that leading us to a situation where we're going to keep needing more teachers in order to fill those virtual needs? So it's, but it sounds like maybe you're dictating that more on the numbers and would require live streaming if, if we can't fulfill that need.
Yeah, I think, I think if we're into the year, it's a different, it's a different situation by that time. And again, we really wanted to avoid students having to change classes. So at that point, we would again try to work with parents. However, that working with parents might mean a different way of children accessing their learning, but staying with that same teacher, because again, like you said, we can't keep disrupting class sizes as the year progresses. So hopefully now we'll stabilize, and we're in a place where we believe we can offer a good experience to each of our students.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions about this motion?
I have a question. Mrs. Lofton. It's kind of related to this one and the next item, because I believe the next item is approving the person to fill this position, and that approval is for September twenty-first, so I'm just trying to figure out if this is happening now or if this fourth, this other class will be created on the twenty-first.
Yeah, it's an important question. The individual that's being recommended for the position seven dot one-two has a medical situation that needs to be addressed and is unavailable for the two weeks. We have placed a paraprofessional, someone familiar to many of the students in the role as a substitute for the time being.
Okay, so we're not disrupting their class on the twenty-first. Those classes have already been formed.
The classes are formed. They started today, and they, it will be that paraprofessional individual working collaboratively when that teacher, presuming she's approved in seven dot one-two, comes on the scene, but due to a medical situation, she just doesn't happen to be available this week and next. However, she's their teacher. She's reached out to the students and begun to build that relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, are there any further questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And item seven twelve, the recommended action is to ratify the provisional employment of the following professional personnel, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes section seven. Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Evans-Rawkin. That brings us on to section eight on support personnel, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Roberts.
Thank you. The point zero one, comment on support personnel. I am not seeing any answer. So I'll move on. Once again, we have a request for approvals this evening on all of the rest of them. Eight point oh two is a motion to accept the retirements and resignations as listed, and ISO move.
Second, Wade.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight point oh three is the motion to ratify the leaves of absence as listed, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight point oh four is the motion to ratify the provisional employment of the support personnel as listed, pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight point oh five is a motion to approve the provisional employment of the temporary technology support interns as listed, pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements, and ISO move.
Second, Wade.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight point oh six is a motion to approve the provisional employment of the community education personnel as listed, pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eight point oh seven is a motion, oops, can you scroll up? Is a motion to approve the following part-time food service staff and part-time cafeteria monitors as temporary custodians at an hourly rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents, beginning at the start of the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year until they are required to assume their regular duties. Hours for each employee are limited to five and a half per day, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
And we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And thank you to all those people, by the way.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and eight point zero eight is a motion to ratify the following part-time Title I and Project Silver tutor appointments for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year at the hourly rate indicated and with no healthcare benefits, and ISO move.
Second, Matthew Door.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes section eight.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Roberts. Uh, Dr. Hollis, section nine on governance. Dr. Hollis, are you with us? I know he was having some audio issues before.
So Mrs. Lofton, I wasn't hearing him vote either, so I wonder if he's been, I see him, but I don't hear him. He's off mute as well.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna text him real quick. Hmm. Okay, he says he's here and he's voting, but we can't hear him. Hmm, okay. Well, in that case, would somebody like to read section nine?
I can do it, Judy. Okay, section nine point zero one, comments on governance. I do not see any hands up. Moving on to section nine point zero two. Motion to approve and endorse candidates for the PSBA officers of two thousand and twenty-one. Unless there's objections, I think we only had to choose from one. Isn't that correct, Mrs. Lofton?
I believe so. It looks like we do need to make a choice for the vice president. So we'll and if I recall from doing this in previous years, PSBA does provide us with minimal information, although I think they have bios on their website. Dr. Russell, do we have, did we get any information, or Mrs. Wyder, did we get any information on PSBA about these individuals to guide our selection?
Yes, if, in the administrative content, added some information, and there's a link to the slate of and it provides all the bio information.
Okay, okay. So if everybody could take a look at that and let us, let me and or Dr. Russell know if you have a preference among the two candidates for next week, that would be great.
All right, nine point zero three is action tonight. Approval of exception of policy two zero two eligibility of non-resident students. The motion is to approve an exception to policy two oh two eligibility of non-resident students to allow families with an agreement of sale to begin two thousand and twenty-one school year as out-of-district students beyond the sixty days as indicated in policy. Families must commit to providing transportation to and from school, and I so move. Second, Wade.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that ends Mr. Dr. Hollis's section.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Door. That brings us to section ten on closing items. Comments from the audience are accepted on any topic. Uh, and let me see, are there any hands up? I do not see any hands up. Dr. Russell, Mr. Ganesh, are you seeing anything?
I am not.
Okay. Okay, if there are no comments from the audience, that brings us on to ten point oh two, comments from board members. And I did text Dr. Hollis and asked him if he wanted to make a comment. I figured I could have him do it over my phone if he needs to say, has anything that he needs to share.
Mrs. Lofton, are you on item ten dot two, sorry?
Yeah.
If I may, I just wanted to call out, we have some anonymous donors provide us with either fourteen or fifteen Chromebooks today and last week on Friday. So I just want to give a public thanks. It's again, it's another way that our community has come together and just really supported one another, and these parents who would prefer to remain anonymous ended up donating fourteen or fifteen Chromebooks for use by our students, and I'm very thankful and appreciative of that. We'll put that on the list for next week.
Okay, and Dr. Hollis did respond to me just to note that all of his votes were a sense as well, and no, he didn't have anything for the board member comments. Does anyone else have any comments before we adjourn? Okay. Before we adjourn the meeting, I will announce that we do have an executive session scheduled for after the meeting for the purposes of discussing legal and personnel and perhaps also safety. And with that, thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.